...tonight and as President of the common council, I will be filling in as the Chair Member of this committee tonight. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise and I would ask Mrs. Stanley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask Mr. Curran if he would lead us in prayer.
(Inaudible) seasons, a pleasant summer, a good harvest, and a time with families and friends. We are grateful for our new families, especially Tom and Val Sadi's new twins. We beg your merciful forgiveness when we have not acted as you expected us for the good of our neighbors. We ask for your guidance as we work on the business of our city and bless all our city children as they return to school. We pray for the protection of our fellow citizens who are experiencing the difficulties of hurricanes past and those to come. We continue to pray for our servicemen and women who protect those freedoms you so generously bestowed on us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Curran. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Present.
Nagashaw.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Trombetta.
Present.
Caladino.
Present.
Perkins.
Present.
Disconni.
Present.
Chaney.
Present.
Estrazito.
Present.
Sadi.
Present.
Cavo.
To your left.
Roddy Rotello.
Here.
Diggs.
Here.
Ty Schultz.
Present.
Arcanti.
Present.
Curran.
Here.
Knapp.
Here.
Levy.
Present.
Riley.
Here.
Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Does the record reflect 21 members present? Zero options. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting is reserved for public speaking. We ask that any member of the public that wishes to speak or address the council be a member, be a resident, and/or a taxpayer of the city of Danbury. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council? Also, you must address the council on an item that's on tonight's agenda, just so you know. Any member of the public wish to address the council? Mr. Nolan? When you come forward, please use the microphone and just state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Nolan. I live at 37 Brushy Hill Road in Danbury. I'm here as a resident and I'm also Chairman of the Central Business District, City Center Danbury Downtown Council. I'm here to discuss item 19, which is the funding of the Connecticut Film Festival. As Chairman of the district, you know our goal has been to enhance the economic vitality of the Central Business District, which is approximately one mile from the railroad tracks to the north, to the police department to the south, and approximately a block off Main Street each side. I have been involved with the district since 1988 and its inception, and I was against the district. However, I was a believer, excuse me, after I became involved, that cohesively, the hundred or so property owners together, working and providing some tax dollars in a cohesive manner in a planned event, was productive for our Central Business District, as well as the heart of the city, which we felt that if the heart is beating, then the rest of the city is going to be beating well. All major highways lead through the center of the city, and we all know its physical presence. We all know that the ups and downs that we've had in the downtown, but we are still there. I've been involved with downtown since I started in 1976, taking over with my brothers and our family business. We have over 200 apartments in the Central Business District. We have a lot of residential customers, as well as commercial customers. The funding of the Connecticut Film Festival that you graciously supported last year, and we worked closely with Tom Carruthers and City Center, the Husatonic Valley Arts Alliance, Northwest Regional Tourism, and Jim Whitney, was a great partnership for not only City Center and our efforts to continue to revitalize and attract people, but it was also something great for our residents, and furthermore, it was great for our businesses downtown. You have a couple of letters tonight from property owners who are not residents, but they are taxpayers. Tom Devine, Daryl Ort, and there is a few other people that we've reached out to to help articulate our message that this was a good thing. Tom Carruthers wanted to, he brought the idea to me and to the board a couple of years ago, and it was something that he wanted to do, and he wanted Danbury to be the main attraction. And I think working together cooperatively, we were able to do that. It was extremely exciting for those of you who made it and those who didn't and heard about it, to be at the Palace Theater and have Joe De Silva and the family open that up for all of us to see. The De Silvers are committed to getting the Palace open again. Joe worked very hard with the city departments to do that, and to have the 400 people in there, new and old, marvel at it. It was wonderful. But Tom brought the theater to us, and we were able to put the venues together and merge people together with it. Andrea worked very closely with Tom along with Jim. The City Center's Board was committed to taking the idea of the film festival and seeing if it worked. And honestly, we have to tell you, we've tried a lot of different things in City Center. Some of them worked, some of them don't work. This worked. This brought people in from outside of our area, people within the area, and they got to see the films. I'm not a film guy. It wasn't something that I typically go and watch films. My kids keep me busy, and it wasn't something that I did. But I went, I enjoyed it, and I thought it was a great thing. And the partnership that was created with Tom and with the Alliance of Husatonic Valley and Northwest Regional Tourism was something that was very beneficial for us. Jim Whitney is opening up shop in City Center because he believes in what we're doing downtown and bringing the tourism dollars back into downtown that we saw leave from us a while ago when the state decentralized, or deregionalized, the tourism industry. So what's important for me tonight is to tell you that it was working. If you have any questions, I'd be free to answer them for what we saw downtown, but to continue the momentum that we saw in working together with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Bolano?
Good evening, Jim Bolano, Naby Road, Danbury, Connecticut. And I work for Developer Scope Realty Associates and was the former Economic Development Director for the city and the region of Greater Danbury. And I also want to speak to item 19 on the agenda to restore the funding for the Connecticut Film Festival. You know, there are many aspects of economic development, and most of the time, we focus on businesses and recruiting new businesses and retaining the businesses that are here, but there's also kind of a counterweight to that, and it's not just about, you know, building up business. There's a quality of life aspect to it, and I think the Connecticut Film Festival brought that to Danbury. I think as much as a community is defined by the businesses and the growth, and Danbury is defined by a strong retail sector, some good corporate citizens like Boehringer Engelheim and others, the art community also defines a community. And so I'd just like to see that continue. It also kind of dovetails into the governor's initiative on giving tax incentives for companies to move their film industry here to Connecticut, and we've seen some of the benefit to that. Sometimes, the arts are a money loser. They're good as cachet, but they're not a money loser. This is the opposite. This brings people into the downtown. People spend money in the downtown businesses, so it is a positive. So investment by the city, I think, reaps benefits elsewhere. Thank you.
Any other member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Mrs. Waller?
Good evening. My name is Michael Howke. I'm an audio and video technician, have been a corporate audio and video technician for the past, oh, 20-some years, and residence 55 Cross Street. I worked with Tom Carruthers in the film festival as a projectionist. I'm also an aspiring camera tech and producer of films in the future, and by volunteering for that and helping it to nurture itself going forward, I think it's good for my business in the future and business in Danbury, and I just want to give my support for the future of it.
Oh, Mrs. Waller, I'm sorry about that.
Hi. My name is Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue. I too am here to address number 19, but from a different point of view. I object to the funding of the film festival on an ongoing basis. We cut so much out of this year's budget and other years' budgets to make ends meet, yet we can find enough money in the budget to fund this festival. I think it's wrong to use taxpayers' money. Why not let them raise money on their own, or let City Center pay for it, or the Tourism Commission, or some of the other agencies that were mentioned here tonight, since they seem to be the ones who profit more than anything? I'm also concerned when my taxes go up $720 in one year, that seniors just can't keep affording this stuff that you all seem to think is so beneficial. You really need to think about other people who are no longer working and living on fixed incomes, instead of just doling out the money. And there's a lot of stuff that needs doing in this town that seems to be on the capital improvement fund that doesn't seem to be getting done. I think that's equally as important as a festival. Festival, I heard, was wonderful. Everybody seemed to enjoy it, but I think there are other important things in this town that need doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. Mrs. Mitchell?
My family owns property on Main Street and Park Place in Danbury. We're taxpayers. Everything I heard about the film festival was very positive. Everyone was very excited. But in the last year, several things have been added that the city is funding. The museum has been taken over. The Iv's Center has been purchased. We're helping with the film festival. My concern is that if these things are just getting seed money so we can get them going, and then they become independent, I'll be very happy with that, but we just can't take on an ever-ending list that we keep adding and adding and adding. My taxes also went up, they went up 30 percent. So I paid the city the usual tax money, and then I paid them, because I was guilty of poor planning, I paid them my maintenance fund. And I don't want the city administration or the city council to be guilty of using things that should be used for their maintenance fund, for some of these other projects that, granted, are wonderful, but they just are not nuts and bolts, and it's a nuts-and-bolts economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Sir?
Hi, everybody. My name is George Caress. I own Nico's on Main Street, 175 Main Street. About the film festival, it was great publicity that I don't think that you can buy for the amount of money that you're trying for the grant that's up. It was great publicity. I think it's a foundation for Main Street. I think it was great publicity for Danbury. It made us look good, not only on Main Street, but Danbury wide, citywide, we look great. We got a great city, and I think it was a nice foundation. And in my restaurant, I had a lot of new faces come in, and they, just to see them walk from one venue to the other on a Saturday morning, was super. These were brand-new faces. These were not my customers. And I just thought it was great. It made us look good, and I appreciate that, being that I've invested a lot on Main Street and ongoing, I'm investing a lot more, and it made Danbury look great. Okay? So if you guys are considering, I'm saying do it. Okay? Thank you.
Very much. Any other member of the public? Pam?
(Inaudible).
If you can just come up to the microphone and announce your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Irene Christenas. I live on 149 Great Plain Road, and I'm a screenwriter, and I attended this Connecticut Film Festival for the first time this year. And I think it's an important thing to keep in this town. We have such events as Taste of Danbury, which has been here 22 years this year. It brings people in, it makes money for the town. The Concerts on the Green, I think, are very valuable. It also brings together a lot of people. I think it's helpful because it helps the downtown and their redevelopment issues. There's also First Night that is part of the events that happen in Danbury. I wanted to say that, to my knowledge, I know a number of people who did attend the Connecticut Film Festival, and they did not fill out the surveys. So I believe that the numbers are even higher of what was spent between restaurants and tickets and money that was spent for these actual lectures. I think the idea of revitalizing the Palace Theater was a good one. There's also the Empress Theater, which was used as a venue for the film festival. Also, utilizing Western Connecticut was a very good idea, and if I have a suggestion, it would be that, it would be held a little earlier in the year, so perhaps that the students from WestCon could attend. But I really think this is an important part of Danbury, and I think it would put us on the map in Connecticut to have this festival. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir? Please. Just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Jim Nolan, 16 Southern Boulevard. Good evening, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to speak in favor of supporting what is in front of you this evening. I did a quick calculation before I came over, and I think $65,000 is approximately .0003 percent of our overall budget, of $200 million or so. It may not be accurate because my, it was like a small fraction, but I think that along with the positives, I hope positives, I just came in due to a meeting, but I hope along with the positives, this evening, I'm able to just say briefly a couple of things that in marketing downtown Danbury, which this council and so many other people in the city spend immense amounts of time and immense amount of money, for a relatively small sum of money, although $65,000 has always got to be looked at carefully, and I can appreciate that and the responsibility entailed. Not only what we get from the direct economic benefits, and I think that's been laid out quite well, we also got tremendous investment at effectively zero cost to the city by Mr. De Silva's, putting in just a tremendous effort, which I'm sure has already been spoken to, and I'll move on from that, but as a landowner, as a landlord, these are not, these are not small things that we face, particularly in today's economic climate, which is the main point that I want to make, which is this. There is a lot of negative press out there. We are in probably one of the most potentially serious recessions, in my opinion, that we've ever faced. I lived through the late 80s, early 90s, that just about crushed most of the commercial real estate developers in the state of Connecticut. We read every day about the negativity, not only in the markets, but in the credit markets. This is not just in Connecticut, this is not just in the United States, this is throughout the world. This is a very, very serious time that we all face right now, along with, and we read about it in the paper every day. We also have other items that come up, and we have faced our own little negativity in the press over the last year about different other things. Wasn't it great for the week or two before the film festival, during the film festival, and the week afterward? We had a lot of coverage in the papers that was very positive. It was positive on a daily basis. It gave people something to talk about, and personally, I think, for, although, you know, who and how and whatnot, the debate of $65,000, I think it's not worth the risk, if you want to look at it, to not support something like this, which brings a very, very positive spin to Danbury in a time which is very difficult economically. If it helps just bring one or two tenants to downtown Danbury, which helps the landlords, the stores, et cetera, et cetera, and/or the businesses, which brought in letters tonight and other positive things, a few extra customers, a few people from the Fairfield, Redding, Ridgefield that I met, they said they hadn't been to downtown. It's a packed First Night Film Festival event. What it really does is it helps ensure the economic viability and vitality to keep our tax rolls full and to be able to support that $200 million budget the city has. I'm in full support of the 65 grant. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Sir?
That's R-U-N-D-H-A-U-G. Just in favor of this, I think it was, from us to move from Manhattan to Danbury to see something great like this was exciting for my family and for the kids, and so I just wanted to say $65,000, I think it was tremendous for downtown. We've spent a lot of money on flowers and lights and all of that, so let's bring the people back to downtown.
Sir?
Good evening. My name is Michael Beck, 85 Post Road, Danbury, Lake Wobeka. I was one of the sponsors of the film festival this year, and I found it to be really exciting. I've lived in Danbury full-time since 95, and I spent weekends up here. I remember the Palace Theater when it was showing movies, and I went there as a small boy. Had to go back there again that evening and see what was done to it was absolutely awe-inspiring. I intend to donate my services again. It was a lot of fun for me, it was a lot of fun for my staff. I did the food for opening night and closing night, and it was just a super event for me. I have done food for the Tri-Decca Film Festival for several years, and to do this in Danbury, my first choice.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into the announcements portion of our meeting. The big announcement that we have tonight is that Tom and Valerie Sadi had Jacob and Sabrina, actually, I should say it the other way, Sabrina was first? Sabrina and Jacob on February, on August 22nd, sometime in the morning, right?
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Everybody except Mom and Dad are getting sleep?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations to you, Tom. Another major event we have this month is September 12th is John Estrazito's, do you want me to say it, Tom?
Sure.
John Estrazito's 84th birthday. And on September 22nd, personal favorite of mine, Mr. Caladino will be...
39.
How old?
39.
Times two?
(Laughter).
Happy birthday, Mr. Caladino. On the September events and announcements, we have quite a few announcements. Couple of the highlighted ones, I'll just give you tonight. September 5th, 6th, and 7th, the Greater Danbury Irish Festival at the Iv's Concert Park. Sean will be there, and it's a great event, well-attended, and I urge everybody to try to make an appearance there. On the 6th and 7th, we're going to have the Taste of Danbury down here on the Green, and also another wonderful event. I urge everybody to try to take a little bit of time out of their Irish Festival, make it over there. On September 11th, we have the Memorial Ceremony at Elmwood Monument at 7:00 PM. On the 13th of September, we're going to have the Walk of Honor. Mrs. Ty Schultz, did you want to mention anything about that?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Walk of Honor is going to be in honor on the city center green to honor the veterans, past and present. Please, everyone, come and join us. It's 9 to 12, and as many people as possible would be wonderful. Flags will be given out, photos will be taken, a video will be taken, and we're going to send them to our brave men and women who are over there with the 411th right now. So please attend, and I hope it's going to be a wonderful event. Thank you.
On September 21st, will be the Iv's Concert Family Park Fair at the Westside Campus. Urge everybody to attend. If you have any questions about that, you can call Ted Sumpess in the mayor's office for any further information. On the 25th is the 45th Annual Old Timers Dinner at the Amber Room, and you can contact Wendy Kuhn de Costa in the mayor's office for any information on any of these events. There's also several others on here, but I just read you some of the highlighted ones. I would like to also mention that on October 5th, at 10:00 AM, there'll be a ceremony at the Fire Headquarters on 19 New Street, which would be our annual Melody Hollis Mass, along with the annual award ceremonies that will follow that. So I urge everyone to try to attend as much as you can. I understand by just looking at this calendar and my own calendar, September is a very busy month. I would urge you all to just do the best you can to try to attend those. Mrs. Ty Schultz, the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make the motion to waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are in file in the office of the City Clerk.
Seconded by Mr. Nagashaw. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The carier leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar, September 3rd, 2008. Number seven. Receive the communication, accept the Danbury train station lease, proposed budget as presented. Do you want me to read number four? Okay. All right, I was looking for that. Number four, receive the communication, accept the donation from Najla Antos Arabic American Cultural Association to the Danbury Library in the amount of $559.62 and deposited to the library fund, .4651 donations. Number 13. Receive the communication, adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Scott Leroy to apply for and accept funding from the Masterish Corporation to help sponsor the Violence Prevention Program to the school-based health center at Danbury High School and Project Homeless Connect with funding, not to exceed $500 for each program. Number 14. Receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Fire Chief Jeff Harrell to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Health for EMS training in the amount of $2,999. Number 15. Receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Paul D. Estefan to execute and file applications, contracts, and agreements with the Commissioner of Environmental Protection to the DEP and to FEMA for pre-disaster mitigating planning grant. And number 16. Receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Paul D. Estefan to execute and file applications, contracts, and agreements, including memorandum of agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the state tactical and scene communication box.
Pleasure, counsel. Mrs. Ty Schultz?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Seconded by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? Mr. Chaney?
(Inaudible).
Consent calendar? All removed. Item four will be removed from the consent calendar. The remainder of the consent calendar, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number one, please.
Communication, promotion to the Police Department. Dear common council members, I am pleased to... Dear county council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Officer Walter Chapman to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department. Walter was appointed in August 1994 and was the 2000 Rotary Club Officer of the Year. Officer Chapman is a past member of the Emergency Services Unit, that's ESU, and the SWAT team, and has many letters of appreciation and commendation, a recipient of the Medal of Bravery in 207, and numerous medals of meritorious service. Walter has a fine record of dedication and service to the Danbury Police Department. Thank you for consideration of this appointment. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Hathi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am honored and pleased to submit for your confirmation for the promotion of Officer Walter Chapman to the position of Sergeant for the Police Department.
Seconded, I think, by Mrs. McMahon. I'm going to give it to you down there, the lady's got it out quicker. Under discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Walter, the mayor wanted me to pass his congratulations along to you tonight. He's sorry that he couldn't be here tonight to do this himself, but I'm actually kind of glad he isn't. Gives me the opportunity to do it. Thank you for your service to the Police Department, and thanks for your career. Would you like to introduce any members of your family that are here tonight?
I've got my two beautiful kids here, Walter and Emma.
Madam Clerk, item number two, please.
Number two, communication, appointment of legal counsel. Dear council members, I am writing to request the appointment of law firm of Kramer &amp; Anderson, LLP, 30 Main Street, Danbury, as an authorized legal counsel for the city of Danbury. Kramer &amp; Anderson is a highly respected multi-office law firm in Connecticut. Special Assistant Corporation Counsel Daniel Cassagrande is a new partner in Kramer &amp; Anderson, effective September 1st, 2008. Attorney Cassagrande has served the city of Danbury well in this role while associated with his former firm, Penny Payne. Thank you for consideration of this appointment. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Teicholz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and approve the appointment of the law firm of Kramer &amp; Anderson as an authorized legal counsel for the city of Danbury.
Seconded by Mr. Trombetta. Thank you, Mr. Trombetta. Under discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, energy conservation tax credit.
Okay, we'll just go on. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make a recommendation to send to an ad hoc committee to include the tax assessor, corporation counsel, a representative from the mayor's office, and the finance director.
The objection, the ad hoc committee will consist of Councilman Cavoe, Councilwoman Teicholz, and Councilwoman Sadi. Item number four, which was removed from consent, please.
Communication, donation to Danbury Library. Dear Mayor Bowden, the Danbury Library has received a donation from Najla Antos Arabic American Cultural Association, 20 Fair Lawn Avenue, Danbury, in the amount of $559.62. Please place this item on the agenda for the September council meeting, as this donation needs to be deposited into library fund, .4651 donations. Sincerely, Mark P. Haskar, Library Director.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. Teicholz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation from Najla Antos Arabic American Cultural Association to the Danbury Library in the amount of $559.62, and deposit it into the library fund, .4651 donations, and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Seconded by Mr. Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor of the donation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number five, please.
Communication, donation to elderly services. Dear Mayor Bowden, members of the county council, the Department of Elderly Services has received donations in the name of the late Mr. Carl F. Bailey. Mr. Bailey was an active member of our ceramics group for the past 20 years. His family has asked that the contributions totaling $170 be used for purchasing supplies for the ceramic clap. Hence, I am asking that the above $170 be transferred to line item 5002, .5601 office supplies. Additionally, the Department of Elderly Services has been chosen to participate in the Western Connecticut Area Agency on Aging, the WCAAH Technology Outreach Project, a program that brings vital information to our seniors and area providers through the Internet. Accordingly, to the, according to the WCAAH, the Department of Elderly Services was chosen as a host site due to the fact that we go above and beyond for the people that go to your center. Being chosen means the department receives a donation of equipment, including a Dell laptop, a Dell projector, a Polycom speaker, phone, and audio card. The total cost of the donation is $2,212.17. I kindly ask the council to accept this donation at the last meeting. Thank you, respectfully, Susan M. Tomanio, Director of Elderly Services.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we receive the communication, accept the donation, transfer, and accept the money and computer equipment as indicated in the communication, and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Motion was made and seconded by Councilman Esposito. Under discussion? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple words on the first part of this letter of donation. While he was married to my cousin Sadie Bailey, we knew Carl Bailey, I knew Carl Bailey as Uncle Carl while I was growing up. He was really a pillar in the family and in the community, for those that don't know him. His sons, his family continues to contribute to this community, and these donations, including one from the son, they're a tribute to the family and his legacy. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor of accepting the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item seven was on consent? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item six.
Communication, donation to Park and Recreation Department. Dear Mayor Bowden and council members, the Park and Recreation Department has received a donation of $1,000 from the Walmart Foundation, which will be used to offset some of the expenses incurred during the construction of Danbury's Community Garden located on Myribo Road. This donation will be used for garden improvements and fencing. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next meeting of the county council. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Nicholas Kaplandis, Director of Recreation.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to receive this communication and accept this generous donation, and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
That was motion was made and seconded by Mrs. McMahon. Under discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Now, item seven was on consent. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Communication, Duckpin Bowling Lanes update. Dear Mayor and council, this office has received and reviewed the documentation and information as set forth in the minutes of the July Agenda, item number 32. This included the background and credit check, as well as certain modifications to the proposed option and purchase and sale agreement, through which Mr. Tocola proposes to transfer his business assets and assign his lease to Mr. Kenneth Nelson Nielsen pursuant to said option arrangement. The suggested amendments to the agreement have been made as requested. The background and credit checks were arranged through the city's consultant as retained by the Personnel Department for such purposes, and have been received and reviewed. Therefore, should the council decide to authorize the assignment and transfer, I can advise you that the requested contingencies have been satisfied. We can provide no opinion regarding the particulars of the option agreement as regards the business aspects of their transaction, as those aspects were not germane to the request, nor to the assignment clause within the lease agreement between Mr. Tocola and the city. Please do not hesitate to contact us in the event you have any questions. Very truly yours, Lazlo Elpinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that we authorize the transfer, authorize and transfer the lease for the Duckpin Bowling Lane to Mr. Kenneth Nelson, as all the contingencies requested by the ad hoc committee have been met successfully.
Seconded by Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the individual, the ad hoc committee, who made the motion requesting these items, corporation counsel did forward on the information to me, some of which confidential. Did review them, shared some information with my fellow council members without disclosing confidential information, satisfied with the background check, as well as with the credit check. And those are no guarantee of future performance, but those were satisfied, as well as the modifications to the option and purchase agreement, which were to make sure that the current leaseholder would be liable for any defaults during the option period. And that was an issue that was outstanding at the ad hoc committee, so that has been met, and that satisfied the request as a member of the committee in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to speak for Mr. Tocola. And Mr. Tocola has been in business for the last 20 years or better, and during that time, he has demonstrated a caring, a reputability for doing what is right for the Danbarian. Most of us don't realize this, but throughout the last 20 years, Mr. Tocola has done everything right regarding running the Duckpin Bowling Alley. He has done a wealth of good for Danbarians with regard to having birthday parties there on Saturdays and Sundays that young Danbarians and people living in the area come there and enjoy themselves immensely, get involved with physical activities. But most important, so nice, is that over the last 20 years, without many of us knowing this, Mr. Tocola has always made sure that those young people and older folks that might be impaired or have Down Syndrome or some other unfortunate diseases, that they too had the right to be at that sports arena and enjoy themselves, and he put himself out all these years. So I just want to reassure each and every one of you and the council at large that he will be there overseeing this operation, and it will continue as it is. And my last word is to Mr. Tocola, that thank you very much for doing all that you did for the city of Danbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any further discussion on item number eight? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item number nine, please.
Communication, water usage.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to send item nine to the Director of Public Works and Corporation Counsel for a report. Thank you.
Item number 10.
Communication, Sidewalk Easement, 84 Hospital Avenue.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to Corporation Counsel and to the Director of Public Works for reports, please.
The objection, so moved. Item number 11.
Communication, request for water, 22 Shelter Rock Lane.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer this to Engineering and the Planning Commission for a report.
The objection, so moved. Item number 12.
Communication, request for sewer, 1 Mendez Road.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Nat?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to Engineering and the Planning Commission for the purpose of a report.
The question, so moved. Items number 13, 14, 15, and 16 were on consent. Madam Clerk, item number 17.
Report, Sheridan Street renumbering.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mrs. McMahon?
Thank you. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing, please.
Item number 18.
Ad hoc report, oil watch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, I'm standing up. Ad hoc report, oil watch, reference number 21, July 2, 2008. Chairman Cavoe called the meeting to order at 5:35 PM on August 21st, 2008. In attendance were committee members, Councilman Visconti and Calendino, Lazlo Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel, David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance, Wayne Anderson, Information Technology Manager, Chris Herb, Independent Connecticut Petroleum Association Director, Jeff Jennings, Jennings Oil, and Chapter President Bob Jennings, Jennings Oil. Councilman Rotello, executive, and members of the public for alternate attendance. Councilman McTeishel sent for the room at 6:15. Chairman Cavoe advised this meeting was the continuation of the ad hoc meeting held on July 28th, 2008. Brief overview of the previous meeting was given. The intent of the previous meeting was for local oil companies to join forces to provide a link for public, for the public to access oil prices. Chris Herb gave an overview of the matter in which Connecticut is supplied with oil and how the price is determined. There are 540 heating oil and gasoline distributors in Connecticut. Jeff Jennings offered comments regarding his concerns relating to the establishment of a co-op, reduction of competition, and future contracts. Discussion follows regarding the best sources of information for the public to access and adding an energy link to the city's website. The Attorney General's Office, Consumer Protection, the Office of Policy and Management and the ICPA site have all good information available. The state is offering enhanced incentives to consumers who upgrade heating equipment and increase fuel assistance. Jeff Jennings indicated that the state provides good information and would be his preference. It was also the consensus of the committee to provide information to residents via the Department of Consumer Protection. Councilman Visconti offered comments regarding liability issues relating to the posting information on the city's website. Attorney Pinter advised that the disclaimer would need to be added to the site. Mr. Anderson indicated that a general link could be added to the city's homepage to provide general information relating to energy sources, as well as a link to the State of Connecticut Consumer Protection Department. Councilman Calendino moved to make available as a public service information accessible to city residents regarding the availability of energy via a link on the city's website to the Department of Consumer Protection. Seconded by Councilman Visconti. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Mr. Visconti moved to adjourn at 6:13 PM. Seconded by Councilman Calendino. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Respectfully submitted, Joseph Cavoe, Chairman.
Calendino, thank you for clarifying your work today, and the fine job that you do.
You're welcome.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Calendino?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the committee.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Under discussion, Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to, through the chair, ask Mr. Anderson if we are still having no problem with doing this on the website.
Let me address this by saying that the technology challenges are not that severe. What we're having trouble anticipating is participation from the various vendors throughout the area in posting their prices. We're able to put that page on the Internet, on the We're able to put that page on the Internet, on the city's homepage, or as a link to somebody else's homepage, thereby alleviating the city of any liability requirements. But the technology part is not going to be that difficult. It's going to be the buy-in from the area vendors that would be an issue. I hope I've answered your question.
I did answer the question, but I think you raised another. One of, one of the committee's recommendations was to not post individual oil companies' prices on the website. It was just to tie into the Department of Consumer Protection's website, which people could gather information about oil companies in the region. So we were not going to post individual companies, individual companies' oil prices on the website, if I'm correct on that.
And it was not my intention to say that we would. My intention was to say that there are links available on the Internet that would have those prices posted, and all we would do is provide access to those other, other links and not to sanction them in any way.
Follow-up to the Corporation Counsel? If we were to do what we said we were going to do in this, in the ad hoc committee and provide information through the website, however, if that information leads to other things, where do we stand?
Potentially leads to other things or by accident? If there's an intentional link to information that could be erroneous information, there's always some limited liability that could exist. I think that's why the committee, committee's intention, I think, was to link to specified, authorized state or state-related websites. If you begin, if you attach links to other sites, you do go, as my understanding was at the committee, you do go a little bit beyond the intent, which was to limit exposure, put a very soft disclaimer on there, which you kind of want on there, but if you're limiting it to authorized agencies, you don't need much of a disclaimer. Does that answer your question? Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the purposes of legislative intent, and if I'm incorrect in this, and that's the committee members to correct me, but as I understand the way this process had worked, there was a thought process of linking and providing individual commercial information. But that was decided to be somewhat difficult, as well as have some liabilities regarding who would post this, where, what range would we draw as to who would be brought in, how many companies, and how far out we'd go. And just to be clear, I was, my anticipation from relating to energy sources as well as a link to the State of Connecticut Consumer Protection Department and the discussion in committee about the Attorney General's Office, the Office of Policy and Management known as OPM, meant that we were going to link to government sites, like OPM, which maintains averages for fuel oil costs, like the Office of the Attorney General that investigates and goes after the companies that are acting improperly, as well as Department of Consumer Protection. I would be hesitant to create links to private vendors and, you know, going beyond any sort of government links that may be here, or even Federal Department of Energy might be able to link to their sites for averages, things like that. But I just wanted to be clear what we were doing on this, so if that's incorrect...
I would tell you as the Chair of that committee that that's exactly what our intent was. And although we had great discussion about linking to oil company sites, we were concerned about the liability and the ability to write disclaimers that would protect the city's interest in that, and that's why we decided against doing that and going just with linking to the government sites and to the Department of Consumer Protection.
Another site would be also the ICPA, which is the Independent Connecticut Petroleum Association. Although not governmental, they collect significant amounts of information, and they work hand-in-hand with many federal and state agencies.
Anything under discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Kirk, item number nineteen, please.
Ad hoc report, Connecticut Film Festival.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ad hoc report, Connecticut Film Festival, reference number nineteen, July two oh eight. Pardon?
Ending again?
Would you like me to?
I think it would be the proper thing to do.
I'm standing up again, Jack. Chairman Mike Calendino called the meeting to order at six fifteen P.M. on August nineteenth. In attendance were Committee Members, Charlotte Trembetta, Ford Appello. Also in attendance was Mayor Mark Bowden, Deputy Counsel Laz Pinter, Finance Director David St. Hilaire, Executive Seal Members Ben Chaney, Mary Tychoz, Joe De Silva, City Senator, Danbury Director Andrea Gardner, Economic Development Director Wayne Shepherd, Tom Carruthers, Jim Whitney, and members of the public. Chairman Calendino stated that the charge of this committee is to deliberate on the Connecticut Film Festival assessment and decide whether or not to do it again next year. Wayne Shepherd stated, as a result of the survey, there were four hundred, one hundred and thirty-two visits to our city, resulting in three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in direct spending in the city. The overall impact was six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. There was a lot of positive press and visibility throughout the state. He thanked the committee for their leap of faith, donation of seventy-five thousand dollars, and would be happy to receive that amount again next year, next year. This is the impetus for a signature event for the city. Jim Whitney explained how the numbers were derived from the survey. Andrea Gardner noted the level of excitement and the public notice of the advertising that was everywhere, which enticed them to participate. Joe De Silva said that the area restaurants were pleased with the extra business the festival brought in, but shops downtown weren't prepared, as they didn't stay open later for the crowds, missing out on their share of the extra business. Mr. Appello questioned some of the figures for the report. Jim Whitney explained how the results were calculated. Mr. Whitney stated that fifty percent of respondents were from Danbury and fifty percent were from out of town, but noted that fourteen point nine percent were from out of state. Mr. Trembetta said that the marketing was incredible and the promotion for Danbury was fantastic. The event is very positive and successful for Danbury, but next year the shops should stay open later and take advantage of the crowd. Mr. De Silva said the film festival gave great exposure to downtown. Mr. Carruthers said the large number of attendees were first timers. Mr. Chaney stated there will be a change in status to nonprofit and wanted to know if a listing of revenues and expenses would be provided, being that the city is giving their money. Mayor Bowden said they wouldn't have to provide the information since they're not applying for a grant. Mr. Rotella moved that the committee recommend to the council they approve hosting the Connecticut Film Festival two oh oh nine at a cost of sixty-five thousand dollars pending a positive recommendation of the contract by Corporation Counsel, proceeding this September meeting of the common council. Seconded by Mr. Trembetta. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Rotella moved to adjourn the meeting at seven oh five P.M., seconded by Mr. Trembetta. The motion passed unanimously. Respectfully submitted, Mike Calendino, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Calendino. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Mr. Trembetta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and approve the recommendations that are provided by the committee.
Hard of hearing in the right ear, so you'll have to excuse me down at that end. Under discussion?
In reference to the last paragraph of the report, Mr. Appello moved that the cost of sixty-five will be approved pending a positive recommendation of the contract by the Corporation Counsel, proceeding this September meeting of the common council. Could I ask the chairman if that's...
You can put that question right through Mr. Pinter. You know?
Counsel, that, that was part of the motion. The details of the contract, I can, I can tell you right now, if the council tonight authorizes the participation in the program for next year, our office will be prepared, is prepared to execute a contract. We don't have a copy for you, because what will change in the contract, unless the council says something different tonight, are just a change of date, some, if you will, some scriveners changes to ramp the contract forward to next year, will change the amount if the amount stays the same. So I can assert to you here that the contract will be prepared in accordance with last year's contract. I don't have a physical copy because not only for that reason, but because we need to consult with Mr. Carruthers as well as Mr. Shepherd, Wayne Shepherd, to make sure that all parties agree on the dates and on the final amounts in the contract.
Mr. Pinter is correcting the language. You signed this contract a year ago, correct?
Last, last spring, yes.
And it was for, how many year term?
Just for one year. One, one season, one season, yeah. A contract if signed would be for another season, similar length season.
There is a positive recommendation from the Corporation Counsel's office.
The recommendation's positive, subject, if the council approves the participation, as they did last year, as a positive recommendation, that we don't expect any legal issues, so long as we don't have to make any material changes, which is our understanding.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all here pay real estate taxes, and certainly we're all concerned about what's happening with the oil crisis this winter. But events like the Taste of Danbury and the Film Festival are well within and consistent with our plans on economic development for this city. The Film Festival promotes our city. If we brand it and we nurture it, it'll produce positive results, as it did this year. But we need to think long-term. It segues Danbury into the arts, into film direction, creative areas, workshops, and entertainment, and it was fun. It brought visitors to Danbury, businesses to our shops, restaurants, and it did fill some hotel rooms. Two thousand and nine could be a real witness test to this program. Just think, we had three months to organize and put this thing together last year. What could we do with eight or nine months? The statistics, over four thousand visitors, three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in direct spending, six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in overall impact, economic impact, and over two hundred, well over two hundred responses, which were overwhelmingly favorable. And that's priceless. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion? Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to reiterate my last position on the, on the granting of taxpayers' funds. I too received many calls from constituents that did not directly receive any of the benefits, and they, they felt that it was not part of government to supply seventy-five thousand dollars to a profit-making organization. So I divided this event, actually in my mind, in two sections. One of them is the cultural enrichment that it brings to the community, which I wholeheartedly support, the efforts to broaden the base of any cultural events, and we do that in many forms. We have many authorities that are related to the arts that operate on their own. As far as the economic part, I do have a problem. It's not a trivial amount if you're a person in the city of Danbury paying double or triple the amount you normally would for fuel oil this year. It's an important thing to them, and when they see expenses in these tough economic times being spent, basically donated to a profit-making organization, they question it, and they call me, and they have done that. To put this in, what the economic portion of it does in this region, in this area, in prospectus, you have to look at things, I know we had on here the Walmart, who donated a thousand dollars towards the recreation in the city of Danbury, and also donates many thousands of dollars in thousand-dollar increments in the community. They do about a hundred and sixty million dollars a year out of their store here locally. Someone like Stu Leonard's, they do about three hundred million dollars in this region locally. Norwalk, right now, is doing their Oyster Fest, which is run by a nonprofit organization, and it was brought to mind as I read the paper and the insert was in there, and I checked on what they do. Inside of three days, they have eighty thousand people that attend their Oyster Festival. It's a nonprofit group. It takes no money from the city of Norwalk, and it gives back to the community two hundred and forty thousand dollars to charitable nonprofit organizations. There is no guarantee when we do not own the Film Festival. We are a primary sponsor. At any time, it could leave the city of Danbury, because we have, we do not own it, we do not control it. It's a private enterprise. And I just can't see where we should be donating money to an event like that with taxpayers' money. We really trimmed out a lot of nonprofit organizations in the money that we gave during budget time. I don't see where we can send a message out to them that we, we have seventy-five thousand dollars to spare. I also see that Center City, Danbury, which Mr. Nolan referred to, which he did not support, as he rightly said, during its, when it first was proposed. We do have a director, and there is a separate assessment, and I don't understand why they're not really running it and, and taking charge of that situation. I could also envision where Danbury perhaps could have an arts festival, almost like a street fair. We get Taste of Danbury, and we have fifteen thousand people that attend in a three-day period. We could have an arts festival as well, as many communities, I was at one in Upper New York State this, this weekend. And we could generate these types of funds and advance the cultural, the arts in Danbury. So I just don't see where we should be investing Danbury money. I support the, the cultural events that go on, but I just don't think that, that Danbury should be giving seventy-five thousand dollars to a profit-making organization.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Anything else under discussion? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended some of the Film Festival. I think it was a positive event, and I do think it actually went beyond the downtown and did benefit Danbury a little more broadly than that. I mean, the effect was felt more significantly in the downtown by the downtown vendors and real, and, and commercial entities, some of which I have spoken with. I think it would be positive for the future, but I also agree with those that are concerned about not just this particular item and public funding, but that there has been other areas that I have opposed, not because of what those events or venues do, but the dollars that are used for them and some uncertainty down the road. That being said, maybe a way to do this is to somewhat split the difference. And with that, I would offer an amendment to the main motion as follows, to provide half of the amount, being thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, to the festival at this time contingent upon matching funds being raised as cash donations or sponsorships within a six-month period, or in lieu of raising such funds, that the Film Festival would return to the council for reauthorization of the amount and could request at a time additional funding.
Motion is made and seconded by Mr. Biscotti for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Chaney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the amendment is good, because again, it shows initiative on both sides. It shows a partnership from the city to the festival, and also gives incentive to the festival to go out and try to raise funds. And I think it's positive, because the festival at some point has to start weeding itself off of government funding, because eventually there may not be no funding at all, but this would be a, a good opportunity for them to start raising funds on their own. And again, the city, they can always come back if, if that is not reached, so it gives them an incentive. And I think it's good that the city at least is offering that as a suggestion, and I would support that amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Rontke?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to know what risks we have if...
I'd like to know what risks we have if this amendment is passed, and we're only going to approve half the money if the other half is raised. What risks are we facing if we don't, if they don't raise their half of the money? Are we not going to have this festival here? I guess we have to ask, where are you going to start looking for other places to go?
Question, please. And then maybe we'll ask Mr. Pinder to chime in on it as well.
I guess bluntly, I guess bluntly, what do you think of that?
Of the amendment?
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, the scope of the festival, as in the document that I've handed out this evening and also emailed to everybody, clearly shows where the festival's going. And it was actually in my original pitch to the mayor and the common council, I almost say last year, it was actually this year, to increase the scope of the festival, to not only have film, but also go into the areas of independent music, and also the areas of what's known as interactive social media and digital multimedia. And this model or this package is something similar to the South by Southwest Festival, which is a very, very successful festival and conference down in Austin, Texas. I need time to plan that, and I really, I can't predict what sort of sponsorship funding that I'm going to get throughout the year. If you look at, if you had a chance to see the document that I emailed around and handed out this evening, you'll see that there is somewhere in excess of $400,000. So far, I've come up with about $550,000 of in-kind sponsorship. They're not cash sponsorships, okay? They're in-kind sponsorships. And the difference between a donation and sponsorship is those in-kind sponsorships are actually an opportunity for a corporation to market themselves with, through the marketable assets. They exploit the festival, they leverage the festival, exploit's such a dirty word, but they leverage the festival instead of giving cash. But the deal's still the same. You know, for instance, the caterer who is here this evening, he did a large amount of catering, and they actually approached the festival, because they wanted to be involved in the festival, because they knew. And in that month, he got, he got 2,000 extra hits on his website and contracted, I believe he told me, somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen jobs. A dozen jobs, a $10,000 or $20,000 a job, and he employs all these people. Well, I'm giving the runaround, you might have to get the hook out and pull me off the state. The bottom line is, is I need to plan the festival, and I'm certainly going to go after corporate sponsors and wean this festival off of public funding, but the festival does bring a value to the city, and at the same time, it would be nearly impossible for me to guarantee something that, you know, I just don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell what's going to happen.
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr. Carruthers, what would happen if you didn't get the money? What would you do?
If I didn't get the $65,000 from the city of Danbury?
Any money whatsoever?
I'd have to seriously consider looking for a similar community, because when I did pitch this festival, I was looking for a city like Danbury, because this is an economic development model. This could be a sporting event, it could be a mud wrestling event, whatever, to draw people to the city. Well, I've modeled it after very famous, several very famous festivals, like Toronto, Cannes, you know, and South by Southwest. A lot of these cities actually put up a lot more money to make one of these festivals happening. So I'm really honored by the fact that Danbury took a chance on this last year with $75,000. Now I've lowered the amount, weaned it off a little bit, because I can see some money coming down the pike as far as maybe grants or sponsorship, and hopefully, year after year, we can wean the festival back. Maybe it'll be next year, maybe it'll be the next year, but it's all going to be a matter at that time, you knowing what to vote on and not vote on. Hopefully, within the next year or two, I wouldn't even be standing here, because it would, you know, it's got teeth, it's got legs, it should stand on its own. If I couldn't get the money here, I'd have to seriously consider finding a community that would fit the same economic development model, because when I originally pitched this, it was pitched to Middletown, Norwalk, Bridgeport, and a couple of other communities around the state. And Danbury stepped up to, stepped up to the plate first with the check, and that's, that's one of the reasons. Plus, I really want to serve my community. I'm a Bethel resident, but, you know, I consider this a regional community, and Danbury's certainly the center of it, so.
No, not this time. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so I understand, the, again, to reiterate the motion, as I understand it, is that somewhat of, half of the monies that were being asked for would be put forward, and then the other, the other monies would be set aside. Hopefully, you, Mr. Whitney, in all due respect to you, you would have time to go out and either write for grant assistance, to go to corporation businesses and see if they could offer monies to help sponsor. It seems to me that, I mean, I'm all for the, what's going on, but I'm also a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned about the issue of the times. The times are very difficult for each and every one of us, and I feel, I feel a little bit worried about those, those people that are on fixed incomes that we turn around and give $65,000 with no, with no attachment of any incentive for you, sir, to go out there and canvass and maybe bring in the other half. I just, in my heart, I feel sorry for those elderly folks that are on fixed incomes and might not be able to afford fuel this year, and so maybe that, that extra $35,000 that would be part of the motion would, could be set aside for them, while you have a whole year to go out and try to bring in that other $30,000, whatever it might be. But if by chance it doesn't happen, well, then you come back to this council, and I'm sure that we could do right for you without you have to, as you said, pull the plug, and in all due respect to you, sir. Thank you.
Can I, can I speak to them?
Hello?
Mr. President, Mr. Carruthers, from what I hear, you seem to be saying you're in Danbury for the long haul.
That's correct.
You know, I think a year from now, two years down the road, the genesis of the amendment would probably be an intriguing idea. I think it's an intriguing idea right now. The problem I have with it is that it probably should have been broached at the ad hoc, and that might have been my fault, I never even thought of doing something like that. But it seems like it's a little bit late in the day for 2009. The idea seemed to be, at the last ad hoc, to discuss the financial impact and general success of the 2008 Film Festival, which by all accounts was financially successful and culturally successful, and debate whether we should fund it again at that time, so that Mr. Carruthers would have a longer lead to put next year's show together, which would, from all reports, produce a better show. If we vote up this amendment, I'm afraid we're going to, I'm sure Tom is a, you know, can land on his feet, but I just don't want to tie his hands at this point. I will be voting against the amendment. Next year, the year after that, Mr. Carruthers is moving in the right direction, the Film Festival has clearly been successful. I think we should pony up or not, straightforwardly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, I know there was concerns of timing here. That's why, I know Mr. Carruthers wants to expand the scope of the festival, which is a good thing. This festival was, and Mr. Carruthers and others did a very good job putting it together in a short period of time. We're doing this now, not a year, but, you know, maybe nine or 10 months before, where the last festival we had, I think we did it a few months, two or three months prior. So that's why I thought this was a way to approach it, because we have a much larger window of time, and to address the concern of what would happen, what's the risk, that's why in the motion, there is an opportunity, and the legislative intent behind it is to keep the door open, so that we can then hear concerns with regard to the absence of corporate donations or underwriting sponsorships in cash for venues. So that's my intent behind it, not to scuffle from the beginning, but to sort of, you know, split the difference here and try to work something out. And I appreciate you letting me speak, and that's my second time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else under discussion? Mr. Curran for the first time.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Councilman Rotella on this one. I think they did a remarkable job after just three months, and I'm not willing to gamble. I want to give him, I want to give him a shot at that one year, and I'll be voting against the amendment.
Second time?
First time under the amendment. Through the chair or to Mr. Carruthers, you had mentioned several communities that were, prior to Danbury, coming forward, were perhaps interested, or you at least made the offer to the other communities. It kind of begged the question, if one of the other communities offered $125,000, would the Film Festival be somewhere else?
No, that would be totally unethical. I don't, you know what, where I eat, I have to sleep at night, and I wouldn't do something, I mean, you know, I live right down the street here. You guys know where I live. No, I, you can't do something like that. I don't live that way.
Right down the first time. Anything else? I'd like to, this time, pass the gavel to Mr. Seaberry. I'm going to speak on this myself. One of the things I'd like to say, I heard some of the comments of some of the council people here tonight, Mr. Carruthers, if Bristol came in tomorrow and offered you $100,000 to bring the Film Festival to them, would you consider it?
You mean to move the main event there? No, if it was decided here.
This wasn't decided tonight. If we decided to only give you half the money tonight, and...
Well, Mike, I'm sorry.
I told you to go and raise the other $35,000 on your own. As a PR company that we're hiring for the city of Danbury, to sell the city of Danbury out.
Right.
Would there be, thought that would cross your mind that maybe you would take the festival somewhere else?
Well, knowing that my contract said that the decision would be made tonight, I'd have to seriously consider somebody making me an offer.
And the other concern I have is, for the $65,000 that we're investing in this, this coming year, or hopefully investing in this coming year, I'm thinking about the people that are having trouble paying their energy bills, and I'm thinking about people that have the rising cost, as we all do, and I'm thinking about the money that, the notoriety and the people that are brought into Danbury, the money that they bring into the city that helps pay the salaries and the taxes, and the other things that people have, go into their bank accounts to help them pay their oil bills and their accounts and their expenses every year. And I'm looking at it from that fashion, I'm looking at it from that direction. I think that it's important that we keep economic development going here in Danbury, and I think this is a great way to do it, and I think the $65,000 investment is not really a lot of money on our part to do that, to work at one facet of our economic development plan. And I would like to, I would like to see us put that money forward and get this going, and I would love to see this stand on its own in a couple of years, and that would be great. And I think that's your hope, and that's the city's hope, and that's the direction we're going to take it. And I find it difficult to hire you as a PR firm and then say, oh, by the way, go raise half the money that you need on your own, because I don't know who's raising the $35,000. I don't know who's going to do that, and I'm troubled by that, so. And one of the, the other comment I had was about the Oyster Festival, because I know somebody mentioned the Oyster Festival tonight. I wonder what the Oyster Festival made in its first year? I wonder what the Oyster Festival did in its first year for the city of Norwalk. It's in, I don't know what year it's in, I go to it usually most years, and I'm happy to see that it has done the job that it's done. But I will also tell you that I know that the city of Norwalk invests a lot of in-kind donations to the Oyster Festival in the way of garbage service, police, fire, EMS, and the cleanup after. So the in-kind donation from the city of Norwalk is probably greater than the $65,000 that you're asking for, for this, and that's what I'm going to say. So, thank you. I'll take the gavel back down, Mr. Seaberry. Thank you. Anything else under discussion? Mr. Trembetta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really feel there is no dollar limit that we could possibly attribute to what this did for downtown Danbury, and I believe what it will continue to do for downtown Danbury. We always, in this council, talk about revitalization of downtown. There's people that oppose the creation of the mall and were frightened, because really the center part of our city is dispersed over three or four different areas. This is a way to bring back to downtown Danbury exactly what we need, revitalization, people that will come down, see Danbury for as it should be seen, not only within our own city, but within cities and other communities throughout Connecticut and across state lines. So I will be voting against the amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Sadi? We have a motion to move the question, seconded by Mr. Rotella. Try your minds, all those in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Yeah, the motion carries unanimously to move the question. Back to the main motion. Oh, back, I'm sorry, back to the amendment. On the amendment, everybody clear on what the amendment is? To reduce the $65,000 to...
The amendment is to provide, happily request the funding contingent upon raising the remainder of the amendment within six months to return the council reauthorization for those funds or additional funds.
We'll call a vote on that, please. This is on the amendment.
No.
Negership.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Trembetta.
No.
Caladrieno.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Visconti.
Yes.
Chinis.
Yes.
Esposito.
Yes.
Sadi.
Yes.
Cabo.
Yes, no, I'm sorry.
Rotella.
No.
Diggs.
No.
Tyshol.
No.
Arcanti.
No.
Curran.
No.
Knapp.
No.
Levy.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Seaberry.
No.
Stanley. One, two, three, four, five, six, six yeses.
Six yeses, fifteen no's.
Six yeses and fifteen no's.
If you have six yeses and fifteen no's, the amendment fails. Back to the main motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've heard a lot of terms, economic impact, in-kind sponsors, leverage, direct spending. Some of those terms can be a little on the confusing side. I've attended many of those events at the Film Festival. I talked to a lot of people also. Talked to people going in and out of restaurants, I talked to people viewing international films, I talked to people, directors who are staying at local hotels. Good for the city, good for downtown. Also piggybacks on a lot of initiatives brought down from the state of Connecticut, initiatives to bring the Film Festival to this area. I also am concerned about some of the economic concerns that some of the speakers voiced earlier. These expenses here are actually de-accelerating. We have other agencies in this town that were in a quarter of a million deep so far, with no end in sight. I really think that we should consider making this Film Festival go forward. I would also like to ask that in the future, Mr. Whitney and Mr. Carruthers do a little bit better job with their disclosure and transparency, just make it understandable for people to get a grasp on these different types of concepts. But overall, I think this is good for the city, I think it's good for Danbury, and I'll be supporting these funds. Perkins? Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Needless to say, the amendment failed, and naturally, I would certainly not, not at this time, vote against the main motion. But I would just like to say that I would hope, as... But I would just like to say that I would hope, as we go forward, and with regard to the financial aspect of this, that maybe you and your team could look to the future, look to the next eight or nine months, and maybe, just maybe, there's money out there in grant funding, maybe there's money from corporations that if you would set aside a little bit of your time, I know you're going to be awful busy, but set aside a little bit of your time, or some of your team members, and maybe you could do a little bit better job of coming before this IAS a year from now and say, "Listen, I had a whole year to do what I had to do. We had another successful summer, but here's what I'm going to bring to the table." Because when you come before us again next year, it chances are, with the recessionary trend that we're in, it's only going to be worse. I do not see things changing that quickly. Therefore, I think it's very important that you really look at other means of funding other than using a taxpayer's money at this time. It is a wonderful event, and I won't question that at all, but the financial aspect of it, it sort of worries me in some way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any other discussion? Seeing that, Mr. Rotello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Almost, okay. Movie industry, 2008 slated for a record year. We've heard all kinds of things about file sharing and copyright violations and everything else, and the end of the movie industry has been predicted for as long as there's been movies. 1949, when television came in, they thought it was going to be the end. 1965, they thought it was going to die, and a couple of years ago, they thought it was going to die. This year, it looks like, good for the movie guys, that it could be a bumper crop as far as ticket sales and general funds coming into the studios in Hollywood. I was at the film festival in May, and I went to one of the workshops, which was put on by Quinnipiac University, a professor from Quinnipiac. And he had a half a dozen students, all about the age of 19, 20, 21, who spoke about their own personal experiences breaking in to this very lucrative field with no experience and no family background. The interesting thing about the movie industry is it happens to be one of those industries where you can get into it and become successful essentially from out of nowhere. You don't need an education, you don't need a pedigree, you don't need family connections. Those things help, there's nothing wrong with them. But you can still get into it and, like Steven Spielberg, become tops in your field with nothing behind you save ambition and drive. So I'm sitting there at St. James Church watching this workshop, and it occurs to me that every single person at the workshop is from the Hampton, New Haven area. There's nobody there from Danbury. And I'm saying to myself, why is that? How come we don't have some kids from Danbury, Connecticut, from this town where the film festival is, at that panel talking about their experience? And the answer is, is because no one has ever showed them. No one has ever taken them by the hand and said to them, some of these kids who may be living in poverty, and said, "Listen, that dream about making movies or video games or TV shows or anything that has to do with electronic performing arts, you can be a part of that. It's not a crazy thing. You can actually do this and hear us out." My take for that day, and this was one of seven days I spent at the film festival, was that if this film festival takes a couple of kids from Danbury, shows them how to make movies, and they become successful, and it gets them out of poverty, the entire community of Danbury benefits. And we've heard tonight that the guys downtown think they're benefiting, and you don't want to take that away from them. That's a really good thing. But we also heard that maybe it wasn't so universal, maybe the, you know, the pros of the film festival are sort of restricted to a small geographical area. I got to disagree with that. I think that the first year of the film festival, that may be true, but if the film festival, through our support, and it's not just financial, it's also, people are volunteering. I've spoken to directors who came to the film festival and said, "Danbury has an amazing film festival." It's our first time, how could it be amazing? Because, they said, the outpouring of support from the community. This is something like, it might be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I don't want to gild the lily here, it may be, it may not. But this could be one of those things where we look back and say, "Thank God those guys back in the Latos put this thing together and stuck with it because it really turned into something." That's the film festival. That's what you're getting for your $65,000 bucks. That's not why I'm voting for it. I'm voting for it because we've got a problem in Danbury that was alluded to earlier this evening, and one of those problems that we have is perception. We need corporations to relocate to this city, and we need them desperately. We've got the infrastructure, we've got rail, we've got highway, we've got water, we've got air, we've got the physical plant, we've got a water system that's second to one, we've got a sewer system that's in excellent condition, we're paid to upgrade it. We've got the physical attributes that we need, but we're not getting our message out.
Mr. Rotello? My house is probably have about three feet of water right in, along right now, because my windows are all open, so if...
Oh, yeah, I heard there's a thunderstorm, I heard a little bit of thunder. So, and, okay, let me wrap this up. I am voting for it, and I think that we should support it because the $65,000, let's put the film festival aside for just a moment, let's consider the public relations benefit that this money is going to bring us over the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotello. Mr. Chinis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope I won't be as long as my fellow councilman was. I think this evening, we heard a lot of positive things about this festival. And this council over the past have been very supportive of arts entertainment in this city. We sponsored the IAS Center, we sponsored the Historical Society, and we sponsored many of the festivals throughout our city throughout the year through in-kind donations. But I also have a problem as a councilman, we also have a fiscal responsibility that we have to endure as well. And as we personally, and I think this personally, you know, I'm going to support the festival as an individual. I will financially support this festival, because I believe this is very good for our city. And not only financially, I also will support it professionally, if you so ask me to. Because in discussions with you, I know you need a lot of help to make this successful. One person cannot make this event successful. But again, financially, I have to vote against this. You know, this city, over the last few months, has been talking about ways of cutting costs. We're going to four days a week, so we can save money. So how can, on one hand, we're trying to cut costs, on the other hand, we're spending it. And then where does it end? If we support this festival, or we can support every festival financially? So as a city, we have to come to grips in terms of how we go forward. But again, personally, I think this is very good for the city, and I think everybody on this council thinks it's very good. And I hope everybody on this council supports it financially as well, so it can assist you to weed away from the city funding. I think the amendment tonight was very good. It gave you an incentive to move forward, to raise sponsorships, and also having the city as a partnership. So again, I do believe the festival is very good for the city, but financially, I just cannot support it. And the second question I do have is for corporations, to the finance director, about certification of funds. Where's the money coming from?
Money would be coming from contingency. Yes.
Further discussion? Mr. Riley?
Mr. President, I would like to move the question, please.
Question, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Nagerschep. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Can I just have a show of hands of the nays for moving the question? Just so we... Mr. Perkins? Has been moved, the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Sadi and Mr. Levy in the negative. Motion passes. Department reports.
Thank you, everybody.
Twenty? Mrs. Teicholz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the department reports, as all members have copies, and copies are in file in the office of the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked by some constituents about progress report and as it relates to the police station, and I wonder through the chair whether I could address the police chief. I hope you received the earlier questions, because some of them are, I wouldn't expect you to answer off the cuff, but certainly, if it relates to the building portion of it, I wonder if our public works director would help out. But the first question is, that was noted by people that reviewed the plans on the police department. The plans for the top floor of the new headquarters show a 14-by-24 office for the Department of Homeland Security. I guess one of the questions is, what will be the purpose of the Department of Homeland Security in that office? Is it a federal agency that's going to be in there?
I think the blueprints are labeled Homeland Security Office. Those labels were put on the blueprints probably two years ago, and our organization has been evolving over those last two years, and some of those titles have changed in that time period. It's not the federal agency, the Department of Homeland Security. It is a title that was attached by my predecessor, Bob Paquette, to the duties and responsibilities of one of our now-police lieutenants, that's going to occupy that office. And he solicits grants, he does training, he does planning, he does security plans. He generally provides for the safety and welfare of the people of Danbury and its infrastructure. He solicits grants, he acts as our liaison to the Connecticut Intelligence Center. Those are the types of functions that will take place in that office. And no, it's not a federal agency that's going in that office.
I think that's what we were looking at here when the question was posed. Because it follows on that that wouldn't be a regional location for surrounding towns, or Danbury would not be a host community for any federal agency?
The only accommodations for outside agencies in our detective area, we've arranged for a visiting agency, law enforcement agency workspace, and that could be the FBI, the EEA, the Connecticut State Police, it could be a task force, it could be any number of things, but simply a desk.
And then it follows with, from the floor plan, it appears that there is a very large increase in the number of cells in the new police station. How are these configured? I think we went from, if my memory serves me, you correct me, please. It's gone from seven that we currently have up to in the 30s?
Well, right now, we have six jail cells. There are three adult male cells, two adult female cells, and one juvenile cell. The new building has 26 cells. Those 26 cells, there's 14 adult males, there's eight adult females, there's three juvenile cells, and there's also a handicap cell, our total 26. We don't anticipate a large increase in crime. It's simply the present building is inadequate for the type of business we do each and every weekend. Some weekends will have a dozen prisoners in those three cells, and so you'll have two and three people in a cell, and it's not safe for the prisoner, it's not safe for our employees, and it's certainly not the way to house people in a temporary housing facility. So it corrects a deficiency in our current system, long overdue correction that's needed.
That, you've answered the second question, Woods, and that was the need, that you're not projecting a crime wave in Danbury area, anything like that?
No, not at all, I hope not.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't see anyone from the board of ed, so I'll have to direct this to the finance director. How you doing today, sir? At the last meeting, we determined that the bonding had not been released yet. Has that been approved? For the education, I'm sorry.
For the education? They haven't requested it yet.
They haven't requested it?
No.
Little system's still on...
It's available for when they need it. In other words, they probably haven't been billed for it, and once they're billed for it, they will get the money.
What do you mean, haven't been billed for it?
For their computers. They haven't requested the $500,000 that they've, you know, that we bonded out, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to highlight something in the community affairs report by Officer Morteira. Not a question for the chief, but just, my wife and I sent a letter of thanks to the chief and the department for the car seat program. You know, we had twins and had to have two seats installed, and I did my best following the manual when it brought the vehicle to the police station. Clearly, there were things that I'd missed in exactly how to install it. And in fact, when we're leaving hospital, there was, the nursing staff asked specifically who installed this, and, you know, the officer not only helped out, but pointed out certain safety things. So it's, you know, a small program, but an invaluable program, I think, shows the outreach the department does to the community. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, I'd just like to thank Sean Stillman from the unit for a job well done where we had some problems on Mountainville Avenue, and he took care of it with a day or so. Job well done, thank you.
Thanks. To the director of the library.
Mr. Haskrell? This will be your chance to make your pitch. I'm sorry that I missed you on the opening announcements.
Yes, Mr. Rotello?
We've been reading in the paper about the plans to close the library one day a week for at least some indeterminate amount of time. Now normally, you're closed one day a week during the summer months.
We're closed on Sunday during the summer, from Memorial Day until Labor Day weekend.
Right, so we would go from a six-day week in the summertime with a weekend day closed to opening both week-end days, Saturday and Sunday, but closing one day during the week? Is that the general idea?
The plan for the six-month trial, the same length as the city hall change, is that the library would be closed on Friday. We reopen again this Sunday. So we would be open six days a week instead of seven during the school year.
So your full weekend schedule starts next week, but we're going to, at some point, we're going to lose Friday?
Well, it'll be the same week as the city hall change. The first Friday we'll close is September 19th.
Now, city hall is also losing a day, but they're extending their hours into the evening. So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, that the hours at city hall is open will be unchanged. Is that the same case for the library? Will you be extending hours during the week? Or are we actually going to lose library open hour service?
We are not extending the hours because we're already open until 8:00, Monday through Thursday, which is far beyond the city hall schedule. We will be losing the hours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Friday.
So that's seven hours.
Yes.
Cutting seven hours a week, okay, thank you. Now, through the chair to the director of finance. Seven hours. Do we have any idea how much money we're going to save by closing that library for seven hours a week?
Not specifically the library, but overall the buildings. We should save about a hundred...
Just the library, not overall, just the library?
Specifically the library. I don't have those details offhand, but we can probably come up with some details for you. We do, you know, those have been broken down by the buildings. I don't know specifically offhand for the library.
Would these be both energy costs and staff reduction costs? Will the staff be taking a pay cut or not?
No, no, because the staff's hours are juggled throughout the remaining six days.
All right, so it's just energy costs of the building? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, if I can make the announcement that I'd hoped would be made at the beginning. I just wanted to let the council members and the other people present and watching tonight that between October 1st and November 5th, Danbury will be having its first citywide reading event. It's called One Book, One Community, and it's been in the planning stages for all of this year. The three organizations that have worked together really hard to put it together are the Danbury Library, Western Connecticut State University, and the Danbury High School. And the book that's been chosen for this citywide reading event is The Namesake by Jhumpa Lahiri. And between October 1st and November 5th, there will be a wide range of programs related to that particular book. Book discussion groups, both in and outside the library... Book discussion groups both in and outside the library, film showings, and the big event at the end is an appearance by the author herself on November 5th. So I just want to encourage everyone to check out one of the 150 copies of the book that we have at the library in several languages, and to participate. If you haven't already gotten it, the brochures were dropped off today for your mailboxes. You can get information also at the site, the website, which is really easy, onebookdanbury.org. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to convey the appreciation from several of my constituents on Birch Road to our director of public works and our city engineer. I know we've worked for a little while trying to get some drainage problems resolved, and I had gotten several calls from them after the work was completed. I missed the last meeting, so I just wanted to put that on the record there. Thank you.